We are ready.
I'll order this. Meeting for North Bend City Council regular session Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. And please join me in the pledge allegiance. Okay, next order of business is a ceremonial with a community planning proclamation to be read by our. Fellow work strikers. Now you have to find it.
Using my best on the backside. I think everybody's and I thank the city council for doing this proclamation, community planning month. For our city planner here, whereas changes constant affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, other places, and whereas community planning and plans help manage this change in a way that provides a better choice for people how to work and live and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of our community and whereas the whole benefits of planning of our public officials and citizens do understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America's territories. And whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizens, citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of North Bend. And whereas we recognize that many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in city of North Bend extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore be a result that the month of October twenty twenty-three is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of North Bend in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Adopted this tenth day of October twenty twenty-three, signed by our mayor. The sign by our city recorder.
Next order of business is the consent calendar. Do I have motion?
I would move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Have a first and a second to accept the consent calendar as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here is unanimous. Next order of business is public comments, and I'd like to thank you for participating in public comment this evening. Public comment period isn't an essential part of local government meetings. Each meet, each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of where you open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of action if needed. And we've got one in person.
Correct.
Mister. Volker.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to thank all the city officials and the police, fire department, hospitals, doctors, nurses. The second thing I want to talk about is our lack of recycling. I mean, we do have a program recycling, but in comparison to like Vancouver, B C, they re you. They recycle. Like your paper towels, your napkins, your clamshell containers, your cereal boxes and things like that, the Saran Wrap that people use, the tin foil that people use, it all has to be separated. And if you don't do that, there's a fine of fifty dollars. And so I wish we had something like that here. I know we have recycling, but not near to the extent that they do up there. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the in-person, right?
Correct, yes.
And we've just got the one for. All right, this one is from Julia Clavalt, twenty-one sixty-four State Street. And it says, this is a request to all the city council members to please review the North Bend city website to examine the need to modernize this site to ensure the community has access to urgent emergency information and city project performance updates for transparency and accountability back to the community, community members. There is no fire department website page that shows current community updates indicating our fire station is aware of and monitoring where local and approaching regional fires are burning. There is no police department city website page that is posting updates on emergency crime concerns and recent activity in our area. We do not have access to seeing a photo of each officer and their contact information to be able to identify who is employed to serve our community. There is no public work department city website page that clearly shows a schedule of the dates that our crumbling streets will be closed for, for repairs. We should be able to see the cost for the project, remaining budget funds available, so the public can access the rate in which the city is moving to address the deplorable condition of numerous city streets. Our state agencies such as North Bend School District provide performance data for every school site indicating if they have met their strategic goals of improvement to meet community expectations. At a glance, links are present on the district website to provide easy-to-read condensed data performance reports back to the community for every school site, every grade level. Why is the city not performing? Why is the city not providing this performance accountability information per department back to the community? I ask Mister Milliron, your city administrator, to please modernize the city website in easy to read and understand format, providing transparency and accountability back to the public. Mister Milliron emailed me back to say thanks for the suggestion, but you can go watch the city council meetings on YouTube or read my city manager report to get information. This is not good customer service back to the community. I'm asking that each council member respond by representing their community constituents by directing the city administrator to be responsible for modernizing the North Bend city website to provide transparent performance updates by department to better serve the residents. I'm asking for a written response back that dictate indicates acknowledgement of this request along with what the future resolution decided on this on for this matter brought forth to the council members. Thank you in advance for your time and attention and attention regarding this matter. All right, that does. Public comments, and now we're going to have a public hearing on consideration, consideration of rate increase for North Bend sanitation. This is the time, well, I I guess I have to start the public meeting. Basically. I have to start a public. Now I'm going to open the public hearing for consideration of rate increase for North Bend sanitation, which will be resolution thirty-three forty if adopted. This is the time set for a public hearing on consideration of the rate increase for North Bend sanitation and resolution thirty-three forty. At this time, I'll open the hearing. First, are there, are there any conflicts of interest or exporte contacts to report by the council? Seeing none? Will staff please present their report? Thank you.
Now, it is reasonable and prudent to have a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed update to North Bend sanitation fees prior to said fees being considered by the city council for adoption and approval. In the following agenda item, you will find enclosed proof of the C P I adjustment for the year twenty twenty-two based on the C P I West Average. If approved, the adjustment will result in a two dollar and twelve cent per month increase for a basic thirty-five gallon residential cart service and a two dollar and sixty-nine cent adjustment per yard for commercial container service. This rate adjustment would be effective November first, twenty twenty-three if approved.
Thank you. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing, written testimony that entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There's a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the consideration of the rate increase for North Bend sanitation and resolution thirty-three forty? Is there anybody, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being neither one, I'll close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have additional questions about this matter for staff? Seeing none? There is no further discussion. I'll close the public hearing. I better do that again. On that, entertain a motion to approve resolution thirty-three forty authorizing North Bend Sanitation, Inc. monthly rate increase as set forth in the proposed, proposed November twenty twenty-three rate schedule.
I move to approve the requested increases for North Bend sanitation as authorized in resolution three three four and as set for the proposed rate schedule.
For the first and a second. All those.
Got your discussion, right? All right, discussion.
Yeah, we need a session. Anybody want to talk about? No discussion.
Good discussion last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a reminder though, it's not us increasing it. It's sanitation.
Right, it's a franchise fee. Okay. Yes, now. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nobody, unanimous. Now, next agenda. Resolution thirty-three forty consideration for North Bend sanitation rate increase. Thank you. Yeah. I guess. I'll entertain a motion regarding resolution thirty-three forty.
Hey, you got it right there.
Didn't we just do that?
Yes, I believe that our script already included the motion and movement to approve the resolution.
Okay, so we're done. Okay, next item of business is the L E D lighting, the street light upgrade. We talked about this last night. Your question of staff.
Yeah, seems like bang, news.
Then all in a motion regarding the L E D lighting, street light upgrades.
I moved to approve the purchase of L E D lights, uh, streetlight upgrade. Second.
Got a first and a second. All those, any discussion?
No, we had good discussion tonight.
Okay, all entertain a motion regarding the L E D lighting on the street light upgrade.
We did that, right? We gotta, we're gonna vote first and second.
We'll take a vote. All in favor of the L E D lighting, street light upgrade? Say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, action if any resulted from executive session. We didn't have any. City administrator.
Good evening. I first want to remind everyone that our city administrator and report and past reports are all available on the city website. Mister Milliron provided a ten-page report this month or this weekend, so I'm going to provide just the highlights this evening. Our finance department is already at work preparing all the necessary documentation and schedules to ensure a smooth audit process for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. I also wanted to note that the city is recruiting for an aquatic director and the position's application window closes this Friday, October thirteenth. This week is Fire Prevention Week, and our fire department is preparing to host their annual open house on Friday, October twentieth from five to seven P M. This is a family-friendly event, and the public is invited to join them for fire engine rides and free hot dogs. Sounds like a great time. Lastly, but this is definitely a big one. We are looking forward to this Saturday's Ring of Fire Revelry. The block party will start at eight A M. here at Grant Circle and will feature vendors, food trucks, chainsaw carving, and prime viewing weather permitting for the eclipse. Live music will be provided from eleven until four. All of the city departments are contributing to the event. We're busy getting ready, and several of us, including the police department and the library, will be offering activities during the block party, and we hope to see you there.
Uh, any committee reports? Seeing none? Move to council comments. We'll start with councillor North.
Uh, yes, the, there was pretty big crowd over at the library just now at six o'clock where Doctor Erin Koiner talked and had a slideshow that was had good information from NASA all about the eclipse. So, and we are prime, it goes from our location in Oregon and it slides down toward the Corpus Christi area of Texas. So people out in Seattle are not going to get to see what we get to see. So it was pretty interesting, and it was very well attended.
Good. That it? Yep, you're done. Okay.
That's all.
Councillor Schultz.
No comment.
Don't you go.
They're up to a good job with that proclamation.
Yes.
I felt like it.
I picked a good one.
Yeah.
I'm sure Joe. And neither do I, but we do have other business. Would you?
Yes, at this time, our main street, our North Bend Main Street manager and one of the board members for the program are going to come up and talk about a presentation that they made at a recent conference. And they have lots of visual aids.
Did they get second?
Don't, don't mess up the big reveal.
I read the report.
Wait, we need to see it. We need me in the audience to see.
You know.
Right here.
Yeah.
Oh.
But pretty confident about the structure. Hello, council, um, Stephanie Wilson, Main Street manager for the city of North Bend, and I am with.
I'm Steve Nye, the president of the North Bend Main Street Program.
So we recently attended the Oregon Main Street Conference in Independence, Oregon. And there is a hundred and six Main Street programs currently in the state of Oregon, so they all gather and go through the different workshops and listen to keynote speakers. And something that they added last year was the Open Door Pitch, and this is an opportunity that was sponsored and hosted by A A R P. And it's a way to be more welcoming and inclusive for your community. So there's a variety of different you know, projects or ideas that they, uh, the different programs will pitch. So North Bend being as motivated as we are, we decide why not go for it, right? We have lots of ideas, and anytime there's a chance to win some prize money, we'll be there. So we crafted up an idea and we were one of three programs that were offered a chance to present.
Yeah, so we were kind of surprised, honestly, because it was the second, only the second conference that we've been to. So we're kind of the new kids on the block with that, with a hundred and six people, but um, so we were surprised that we were selected as one of the three, but thrilled, then nervous. So the board was kind of brainstorming about like, what could we do? And we all kind of wanted something visual, something that could kind of speak to. You can see it, we have this new area with a new visitor center, so we kind of envisioned something in that realm. And then Stephanie came up with the idea of a wayfinder sign, which is kind of a big, bright sign that directs people to different sections of the, of the, of the, of our town, of our downtown district. So that's how it kind of was hatched.
Yeah.
Then we just ran with it.
So, uh, Main Street works on a four-point approach. I know I spoke a little bit on this at each update that I give you, uh, design promotion, economic vitality, and organization. So we really dove into those four points and built off of that. So I'm going to let Steve talk about each sign, and I'm going to go up and build it. And this is how we did our presentation and our pitch. We had a PowerPoint that was on a big slideshow behind us, very giant, as you can see in this picture. It was called at the cinema there in Independence, and so we had about three feet in front of the screen to, uh, do our presentation with a giant screen behind us. So, um, Steve and Eric narrated the, uh, pitch, and I built it as we went. Um, one thing that's really great about this is we really wanted to touch on the arts and the diversity in our community. So what we are going to be doing is looking for four different types of artists to help design these arrows and an elder, uh, youth minority and a female artist. So that's one thing that you'll see on upcoming that we'll be doing. So I'll let Steve kind of go through those and I'll.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go through them.
So is the prop, the pitch for the prize money, or is the prop a project that's going to show up in the city some?
This is just like a prototype of what we want to accomplish. It'll have to be engineered and all that. This is just to give a visual to the panelists, which actually they had four panelists that asked questions at the end and was interactive, and then the whole Main Street Conference attendees roughly, um, this is held at the very end of the conference.
One to one fifty-ish.
They actually go on who wins. So three programs pitched the idea, and the attendees are the ones who vote, not the panelists.
Yeah.
So this is a pitch. This is a, a project pitch, not a, something that will show up in the city. It is a.
A, a, actually this, a little word. It could elaborate, will show up.
This is what we plan on doing. So it's just get the visual. We already did the pitch at the conference. This is just sharing with you guys what we pitched. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Oh, where do you go? Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, we'll ad lib. Okay. All right. So I mean, there's, there's four points, as Stephanie talked about. It's the four-point approach. So the number one is economic vitality to the North Bend downtown district. Um, so one of these, we're gonna we're gonna drive visitors towards an economic heartbeat with a blue arrow indicating shopping areas designed by a gifted female artist. Okay. And then, uh, we have another arrow directing for promotion, which that connects visitors to our local events with an orange arrow pointing towards our event tent, di- designed by a talent, talented minority, or indigenous artist. Uh, we have organization and outreach. That's going to introduce into our sources of knowledge with a yellow arrow leading to our library, created by a young artist. And then finally, we have design that, that's going to highlight our artistic venues with a green arrow pointing to our theater crafted by an elder artist. And so obviously, we're pulling on very important parts of the Main Street protocol, but, uh, there, as you can tell, they're pointing at places that are dear to all of us and that make downtown North Bend kind of click.
And there'll be some kind of open in North Bend, like on top, which will be defined. And then one thing I want to touch on is, uh, good old Q R codes are still very handy in today's world with smartphones. So it will also have a Q R code that once you scan it, it will highlight each artist that painted this specific arrows, as well as a list of art classes and projects in the area, uh, mapped to all our downtown murals. And also where these, um, items are, like the programs in the library, it'll feature that how linked to the library as well. So they're very good, especially if we're not open to visitor center, they come, it catches their attention. Hopefully, they take pictures with it, and then they can, uh, scan the Q R code and check in. So we're really excited about it, and, uh, I'll let Steve tell you what the Main Street attendees thought of the project.
Okay. So with the attendees, they, they voted. Well, it was so David actually ran into the Oregon Main Street, um, executive at his conference he's at right now, and she went on about how close it was between first and second place. And then it was also stated that representatives from A A R P said even though they didn't, that North Bend didn't get first place, we would like to help fund them on the difference. So that's not a guarantee, but it was like a really cool thing to hear. So we did, and it was close, but we did get second place, so we received a three thousand dollar grant towards, towards that project. Yeah, yeah, so. Yep.
And, uh, we're just excited about this. Like Steve said, something tangible that our program can do. We've done lots of events and, um, you know, we're located different programs. We want to start a youth program, and then this is a physical project that we can show downtown and help, you know, and incorporate who we are and give a visual to the visitors and, um, locals as well.
So it's be at the visitor center or somewhere else around?
Somewhere close by the visitor's center. Yes, so it's very centrally located.
And so it seems like it's a combination of a physical but essentially located place where people can look at sort of the list, there'll be Q R codes or a Q R code that gets them to the various places along with maps, so it's both online and.
That can be actively updated.
Yeah.
Yep, so as things change, I mean, it's timeless, so as things change, we can update that, that target, so. Yeah, yep, yep.
So we just wanted to share with you guys, and so thank you for letting us take the time to do so.
Being, being at that conference with that many, um, Main Street programs, we probably not many of them that have a welcome to and come back to me on something that's come into town.
There's a lot of unique things definitely to North Bend. Um, you know, one of the, we learned a ton at that conference. Um, one of the things we got to listen to Mary Means, and so she was one of the three founders in nineteen seventy-seven, and she's basically the government brought her in and two other people to say, hey, there's a problem with downtown districts in our nation that it's going, people are going to malls and they're leaving downtown. We feel this is an issue. So what that organization has worked on since seventy-seven is fixing that. And so we saw Independence, they had a twenty-year plan that started about twenty years ago. Their downtown was not in great shape. What Stephanie and I saw was the transformation of like effort and, and just, you know, cohesiveness to make their downtown is amazing now, and it was questionable twenty years ago.
Well, and we, um, it's really great because although we all identify as different names, there was representatives from Florence, Reed's Port, North Bend, Coos Bay, and Banden, who all work on Main Street Program. So we were amongst our, um, sister cities, and it was great to see so much coastal representation there, and we each had different ideas, and so ours is we're always trying to incorporate the whole city, I feel like, and we've done a great job in the last year, and so this is the way that we can help point all different directions. So we're really excited about this project.
Yep.
Good job.
Okay, so thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Want to leave your prop up?
Okay, that will be the.
Other business.
We're gonna go into the. Okay, I will close the city North Bend regular council meeting and open the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven twenty. Stephanie, you talked too long. Okay. I'll order public comments. Is there any public comment? Okay. Uh. Next item of business, Steve Google amendments from September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have motion?
Approved the minutes, September twenty-sixth.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those approved, if in favor of approving the minutes from September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Item number four, L E D lighting, street light upgrade. Same thing as last time, only just this, a portion of the funding out of the U R A. I'll entertain a motion to approve the L E D lighting, street light upgrades, the urban renewal portion.
I have, uh, moved to approve the purchase of the L E D lights, um, the U R A's portion as listed.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the L E D lighting for the streetlight upgrades for the urban renewal portion of the funding, say aye. All those in favor of approving the L E D lighting for the streetlight upgrades for the urban renewal portion of the funding, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Are you the executive director?
I am acting today, and I will get your timeline back on track with no report.
Wow. We missed it by two minutes.